Yes, sir. So, a few points of importance for this project regarding both applications. This is again a 92.75 acres site. The applicant again requests a rezonant subway property from R1 to H2. It's an operation for a residential stone mine operation. The applicant requests an extension of use permit for having mineral extraction operations. The applicant intended to apply for special use permit without the appropriate property rezonant from R1 to H2. To clarify a few misunderstandings, the process of mineral extraction includes cutting large blocks to the works lath, which can then be used for building designs, countertops, decorative pieces, sculptural pieces, linings, and overboarders. The process of extracting property is not anticipated to involve any other party. No blasting activity, no ground vibration, and no torrential smoke is anticipated for this project. Also, the applicant has indicated that access to the subway property will not be located off of a road with high elevation. So again, to clarify again, the access to the property for this project will not be located off of a road with high elevation. There is proposed no permanent buildings. Again, linted track will be anticipated for this project as the applicant has indicated four or five of those will be on-site. Our operation will be completed at our indicated due time of day in the 5pm. Stormwater management is to be on-site with consultants and on-site settlement agents as well. With all our applications, again, it's time to go out of the temple and review these two applications. Statment with approval with the conditions, however, the claimant's condition is the trial of this application.
And as I understand, the stat recommended approval with the conditions, can you state those conditions please?
Yes, sir. The applicant recommended fourteen conditions. Condition number one, extraction activities shall be less than 25 feet from any adjacent driveway and not less than 50 feet from interior property lines. Extraction activities may be authorized within 50 feet of interior property lines in no case less than 25 feet with express rigidity of adjacent property owners. Condition number two, set deck areas are patently landscaped to achieve 75% of opex. Opex, with two years of, within two years of the operation, blasting and pressure shall be expressly prohibited. Condition number four, extraction activities shall be prohibited between the hours of 6pm, 7th of February, Monday through Friday, weekends and federal holidays. Condition number five, ingress and e-race points shall be limited to paved materials and state highways and approved subjects to, and approved subject to the requirements of the Rockdale County Stone Water and Ice Station Department. Number six, all crew and maintenance entrances shall be fenced and locked during non-business hours. The permit shall be patently posted and such noise filed with the proper county authorities. Number seven, brading or other construction materials on this site may not exist in natural drainage ways in such a way as adverse in effect in adjacent parcel of land, either by increasing or mitigating the drainage flow over that parcel or by impeding the drainage rates flowing from that parcel. Number eight, natural creeks, streams, rivers, lakes, or other bodies shall not be altered and relocated by the operator unless such operation or relocation has been specifically approved by the State and federal agencies and the board of commissioners. Number nine, operations shall not adversely impact adjacent properties and shall comply with the performance standards of section 218-13. Number 10, noise generated by mineral extraction activities shall not exceed the standards set for in any applicable law or regulation including what that lends to the official code of culture, Department of Natural and Social Regulation, and Department of County authorities, which is ever most stringent. Number 11, waste room foods generated on-site shall be contained on-site and securely fenced location and/or transported from the site in the goals of an environmentally safe and legal manner. Number 12, drainage plan, dust abating plan, noise abating plan, emergency operation plan, and a comprehensive reclamation plan shall be submitted and approved prior to any extraction activity. Said plans shall demonstrate compliance with and all doubtful rules and regulations. I would like to repeat one more question please. Drainage plan, dust abating plan, noise abating plan, emergency operation plan, and a comprehensive reclamation plan shall be submitted and approved prior to any extraction activity. Said plans shall demonstrate compliance with and all, with any and all doubtful rules and regulations. Number 13, the site of the extraction activities shall be stored to a useful condition subject to the comprehensive reclamation plan. Reclamation activities shall be completed and no later than two years from the cessation of extraction unless otherwise intended by the board of commissioners. Number 14, this unit shall perform to all counties, states, and federal boards.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our application is about to leave, Mr. Director.
The next will be open to public hearing, sir. I'm going to have to go there. Next is the applicant to public interest in their application and the applicant next here.
All right, very good. And if you would look at the applicant, I would ask that you take the role and rest up right before we see your mic so that you can speak into it and you're about to be here. So if you turn it down, we can make sure that we both have that. If PR staff are more sensible with that and make sure, or whatever we can, make sure they're not competing. If you talk about this until I get over to the third, will we get exactly correct now? And now, Deputy Director, thank you for the help. I want sure you have an extra person, you can just act over there to make sure that as speakers come, they assist each speaker so you know how to come across and ask about that. So, Mr. Actor, have at it.
Thank you, Chairman. Honorable Chairman, Commissioners, we are grateful for your presence here today and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you, mining is great, frankly, along with mention and your partners and owners of LG13LSC. We'd be happy to hear for two purposes. Before we begin, we wanted to request that we reserve some of our 67 minutes so we can further respond to questions of our chairman, my friend. Also, actually, did you request that?
Yes, did you request that? I've already given you time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So, we submitted a few items into the record as well with the deputy director, and the corporation as well on the record. As a background, we are an American-owned, locally-owned business. We, our plans are focused on rock extraction here in Georgia, Rockdale County. The name of our entity is LG13, obviously, that is going to have a formality. It includes the rock in it, to signify the importance of the rock that we have, property. And the team of Rockdale bring back to its roots, for its name, Rockdale. We, in terms of our background, we, well, if you like, and I have been investors and operators for the last 20 years, have a background in civil engineering as well, and we see the opportunity to speed. Our operation would benefit the county of Rockdale, and we'll talk a bit more about that. So in terms of our plan, you know, we plan to extract rocks, which is a process that we will talk a lot in detail. And that rock is then taken offsite, purchased by our customers, and processed into things like, you know, countertops, you know, tile floors, broken papers, and all of this, you know, starting with the operation during the Rockdale. We plan to make our headquarters, obviously not on-site, but have a formal office building in county. But then we can extend our operation to other parts of the state and the country. Some examples of, as our department mentioned here, you can see some pictures. We have samples on our corner table, it's just an example of some of the rocks from our property. We presume are pretty comparable. It is one of the, someone uses this as an image for this, but also for things like office buildings, building buildings, sports complexes, etc. We, you know, we'll talk a bit more about kind of the process here, but generally, during the beginning of the point, you know, this is, there's been a lot of, some confusion around kind of what our process is. And so we listed the ordinance here as well, and one thing, we want to make sure everybody understands that we are operating, the bedrock for this project sits on the ordinance of Rockdale County. We know Rockdale County has very strong of enforcement, we try to follow every part of it and seek interpretations in many cases, and we'll talk about that in more detail, but we're just highlighting some of the ordinance upon which this sits. And so, you know, to preserve our constitutional rights as well, we want to make sure everybody understands that we are doing this for the benefit of the county, and we'll show that in terms of how this benefits our citizens. So just more specifically, we've taken the liberty of putting the ordinance in some area over there, but along with our plan, and as you see, for the first one, property area, minimum 85 acres. Where might we proceed first? Setbacks, where would we find required setbacks to the property? No blasting and pressure whatsoever, our process, and we'll talk about that in more detail in terms of how this is different from some people are visioning. Hours of operation, our plan includes 85 hours per day, nothing on weekends. We would expect the hours, and we will obviously go for every part of this. Ingress and request points, you know, we listed the accounting, we listened to the foundation, we listened to our neighbors when we're putting entrance from Georgia, 520, and now we can get our, put our main entrance. Security fences, noise, drainage, all within the required laws, and we'll talk about that in more detail. So let me turn it over to my partner, Mike, to be talking a little about our plan.
Thank you, Gary. So starting with our site here, as Mr. Rick mentioned, there's two properties that we have a lot of. What we refer to as A and B, A in yellow, B in red. We got a quarter, 220, here. Total site is a little bit under 30 acres. Then we have our second plan here. So we've built, that plan here reveals where our property areas, the whole part of our property, 220, here. Also showing on there that we have our entrance plans, we have 220. So we're kind of, cleverly, since dimensions still being something new for most people here, so we have a short video to explain how the operation works. So we see here, if you have stone, we'll come up to the stone, we'll use a drill, about two feet apart, to create the last in the block. That will come back and be drilled in the main area, they'll fall before inside the block. We're going to take a direct take wire saw, that drops down and comes in, and it's actually what will come off this stone. We'll then use triangle to lift that stone to safety area, where eventually transferred us.
Perfect. So, you know, there's been, you talk about, you know, and we appreciate that you clarified this as well. You know, people would associate this with an aggregate mine, a mine, and that is not a order of, from, from. So just to be very clear, you know, for the benefit of the forming, right, this is not an aggregate mine. This is dimensions stone extraction, but very big from what happened before your aggregate mine is. And here's how, you know, the stone removal process, you know, this is not a, any blasting whatsoever. You know, the aggregate mines, we're all bringing them across, it's dusty, noisy, tight rock trucking. And as much people associate with, you know, with aggregate mines, and that's sort of the big decision where people have misunderstood what our plan is, or is this, you know, simple stone extraction, tiny rock. They thought people didn't want to break them up into smaller pieces because they have less sound if that happens. And as minimal dust, and we'll talk about that in detail along with the truck. So, you know, in potential passing neighbors, you know, I know this is a point that, you know, you spend a lot of time on and even discussing with many neighbors, you know, every part of our plan involves every part of the ordinance. And we want to stress that, we work with, obviously, you have an ordinary person, apartment in Rockdale County. But just to, you know, just summarize, so quick, you know, there are plans, or plans living on the rock of our site extraction. We plan to be all the trees, they work as natural, you know, 92, just on 5.8 acres of site plan. And all the buffers exist and will remain there, so minimal impact over there. Water run off, nothing questions the water table, you need to recycle water. We actually have a, like, benefit of our line to do that. Because we use water in our process, we dash it, and it's literally just plain water that we recycle for plenty of purposes. Waste disposal, you know, for five hundred places on-site, you know, happens to be semi-anually, and then you take out the dirt. And then, you know, noise and transportation, you know, minimal type of, and we'll talk about that in more detail shortly.
Okay. So the next slide here to talk about, some of the potential issues, noise, dust, traffic. Just to be precise for that, we want to outline, this is a total work area in our paper. So we have three distances on areas, you know, the closest paper is about 276 feet away from the edge of our bed. Again, it's still going by the time to our property. So just like here, I know it's awesome, and talk about dust in the area from a drill. I will note that these two studies that we've done were for drilling without any sort of water pollution. We will use the water pollution both to save ourselves in the interior and also to keep dust minimal. For all of these cases, we found that our cell would have just been a little well-known, created thresholds, and really we add that in that required at 82 each, each technically. This study has two types of particular that, they're another, ten microns, and particularly that are at 2.5 meters. This is the study of the 2.5 microns and the 10 microns, showing the results for assisted e-ACs. Noise analysis, again, I think some neighbors, our studies have shown that drilling can create noise levels at the site. But it would be made three decimals, so 100 decimals are archeology confirmed that they never really include us as same on the site. Now, it's more important to be three decimal. That's how, for this particular time, the general sound is that as you build the distance, that will be increased by eight. By the time you get to about 50 meters from the site, the noise level should be 558 decimals. Again, it was a property line to a drilling area, it's been two years. For reference, decimals scale here, 78 decimals is the noise that we would see the higher. This is 50 feet, again, are anticipated noise levels between 50, 60 decimals, somewhere between the Hoover, Virginia, and the Congress Station. Track analysis, again, with the anticipated, with the plan, entrance of 220. From here, you remember today, track analysis, purpose, this section control evaluation. The analysis said the optimal track control is just outside, right here, is exit of our site. It does listen to the environment, pretty much beyond that noise, this case, to the impact of the track.
So one thing that has to come up is property values, and concern on that, we do a lot of analysis following meetings and, you know, expert calls, talking to tax professionals, looking at certain transactions, and looking at potential alternatives. So, if any analysis that we have done has shown no negative impact on management, no facility being on property values. In fact, a basic piece that we ran after this, something very comparable to us, and you've seen on the property values. But one thing we really understand and really keep in mind, is the potential alternative. This is around a little over 90 acres. If there's other houses there, you could put, you know, a hundred homes, those are, you know, that multiplies with the number of cars, which is very light with e-commerce and, you know, Amazon delivery trucks coming in and out. There's significantly more dust and more cars that are being streamed through the single lane roads here in Rockdale County. If the alternative was to not do this, to do, how to say, maybe this would be the zone of one, so that is a potential alternative use, I encourage everyone, especially, you know, citizens who think about that in terms of the alternative use of this property if we don't do our plan. So just going over to the next slide, in terms here, this is at the last time we mentioned, we made, you know, we asked to do a rest study to look at something comparable, we did, we found one less than two hours later. And I would, told you, I mentioned some of this company informed in 2020, to see property values which is increased. And then there's, you know, it's very comparable size under, and it goes a bit around too. So, you know, last thing, you know, just think about the income, the benefits here in terms of county, job creation, county visibility. This is beautiful rock, I mean, you've seen some examples, that's just a slight example of the shared view of polished rock. From our site, that is our rock that we took samples of, and one of the main destinations of the first of the larger operations, starting with Rockdale, Pima Airport here, Pima Route here, and other self-stated facial operations. So finally, in closing, you know, we want to summarize this whole project based on the technical ordinance. We immediately see, as you see, you know, point by point, and we will continue to work with the county. Every step of the way, going across into the division, this is well pronounced from the planning department. So thank you all for your time.
But let me ask you a quick question. This rock that I have here, is this actually from the site of the site?
Yes, sir.
Each one of the divisions have a separate, I think, last question, watching the head on. Did you bring the site for the folks that want to, to ask to see what we talked about?
Well, no. We didn't, we didn't, you know.
That's a very, that's a very, that's a, we got three, we got three sections, and all that, that, that. Last show, we care.
That's me right there!
Show that to the parents around my corner. I'll take long with you. Okay, I'll take long with you. All right, well, they were dead. Get it corrected. I'm gonna follow you.
Uh, yeah, that one may be like you may uh use every day about time right now for that six minutes and forty three seconds.
I don't give you our chance make whatever decision you.
There are fourteen minutes. We start we started down there fourteen minutes and forty one seconds.
Sir, yes, I was that year that more from you on here.
And I want to conduct this stuff, sir.
I'm not putting any to that before.
That's fine, fourteen minutes, over.
You have that deadline. Would you stay right there while I can see you? Let me tell you this, this is the very sensitive side of the citizens law in the county which came I'm really good at conducting leads I'm gonna make sure that everyone voices heard right I'm gonna manage the clock and manage the time at every night in fact if I go over one part I'm gonna deal with it go over another I'm gonna ask sir kind sir that you do not have love about a person like that and gentle love and disrespect my need if you do chief on very kindly escort you out of it thank you so very much okay there's four for the rest of the students.
As an addressant I was sitting over here people who still don't sign up to meeting were favored or in opposition to that application.
Absolutely this is attractive time as I stated to the general we should give you fair play to get required.
So we need that one person who signed up being supportive for school. Uh, yeah, it's Herman Paul Thompson.
Thank you commissioners I signed up for support but I have a question like you shot I wish to respect orders or or against it now I lived on Zera for sixty years and for twenty however I've been there a long time I would move up in both of them now I think what they're doing is illegal okay but I also like you said I lived there a long time I don't wanna see that sixty ninety acres of our rock some of our rock but I also don't wanna see half a lot of a bunch of housing that I back over I think that has a lot of our rocks too in our little community it's been a community like I said I've been there for sixty years so this is illegal but I think housing a bunch of housing on Zera is great so I would rather see my baby if I understood it by home for four years than it converts to something else but that's my thoughts.
Thank you for your comments.
No, sir, we have a secret reason to be in there with applications.
Okay, so continue on with this.
Uh, now we have people who are in opposition.
You have a list?
Yes, sir.
How many do you have? Just hold it up so I can see it correctly. Hang back. Get it corrected. We're gonna do this together, okay? All right, the next speaker moves up in opposition, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Fisher, hold on.
Good evening, I live at twenty two seven in Zera and I've been there for twenty years I bought house out of the end because of where it's located and the fact that the property across the street from me can't be built on because of all the rock you know and I this is great I didn't want to live in the neighborhood you know and I also don't want to live next to an operation like our uh they're you know wanting to you know it's it's not gonna be good for our communities it's not gonna be good for our property values it's not gonna be good for our environment or anything I don't you know how they think that they're gonna contain every proper water that they're using on the property if you ever had stone or tile put in your house and then use a wet saw to saw it there's a lot of you know dust and you know water that comes off of that you know I don't want to head across the street from my house you know I want my house and the property value stay and maintain not to open up because of something like this it's not gonna be good they say they're not gonna come in on Zera Road but they're gonna come in at twenty okay there's always a place that you know there's a there's a stone you know I don't know what you call one where the car goes down all the way down almost to the end of the area there's a stop sign okay there's one area it's dirt it looks like making nothing there but you know that's gonna be a traffic hazard you know you're coming down the road a lot of people go this way the police sit around my house so they can catch you you know because when you come down the road you're going up towards high road you know people get they come away from our street okay they're gonna slow down they're mean it's gonna cause wrecks you know there's already been wrecks on my house you know I don't want this nobody that I've talked to wants this you know but I hope that y'all take the recommendation of the planning union you know I don't have to say that they're only gonna have trucks coming in and out there you know that's gonna be wrong it's not wrong it's not wrong how can you put those heavy trucks coming in and out there and expect it to not tear up our roads you know they just did what we proved us seven years back you know we don't need you know those trucks coming in tearing up our roads we don't need the you know the dust there's a lot of there's a park deer rabbits birds and stuff that cross the street on there you know that's gonna run them and what they're gonna do they're gonna run across the corner you know in some of the small you know they're gonna be moved trying to find a place to lay down and find a place to live you know because their their home has been invaded by their you know operation you know so I hope y'all take the consideration of what the planning union said as they don't want it you know would you want this in your front yard? I don't want it in my front yard so I hope that you can think about the people that are struggling this is residential area not a business area you know we wanted to say just residential and I asked them you know what are you gonna do if you could shut down for doing this I said oh well we'll sell it and then somebody buy it and the neighborhood there no they won't if they would if they could have done that they would have done it a long time ago but they can't because the rock was so deep you know and where's that it runs back to a creek which runs into the Yeller so you know there's no way that you can take out the water so you can't say that having diesel generators is gonna be a fire environment trucks coming in and out there gonna be fire environment or from the bomb like that's on the property so I'm not gonna talk to you you know think about that and making decisions and think would you want that in your front yard?
Thank you, Ms. Hope. So let me remind everyone you pause I've done a decent stack of folks who are going to speak I have what you call a pretty simple role these are in heart this time record allocation is for those who are in opposition I want you to articulate get out all of your opposition when I want when you keep in mind I got some other people who are coming at you and say no as well and same token I also afford the second lot of time given because this rock may not work in my favor tonight but due to the sensitive nature of this particular area and this item we're gonna make sure we avoid him on the opportunity to speak tonight that being said I call Alan Thomas Smith Thomas Smith please.
Hello there, my name is Thomas Smith, we live off of Central Wall, Zera, Rockville, about three eight two miles from there from ago and we're down here so we drill and do and there is any disport table people in here in all ways and we have two hundred and fifty families who live off that way where I'm at and I did the research on the internet it says that granite is maybe between fifty sixty seven percent of silica and one twenty five percent uh pre- adhesives in there and both are here literally ground up drilling and grinding on channel and I used to work construction and I put out a lot of granite pipe and it puts and what does it use the same water but it was a screw in the top because it gets finer and finer and finer and you use it there's no way you're saying it's huge in the font it gets down to less than that it will get in your lungs because it's like a layover it causes cancer it causes heart disease and for any poor kids that have it this is a nightmare for them and there is a subvention that is not that falls in there because I've been behind the school bus a very long several time about a little number of kids with that subvention and there were a lot of things in that subvention and that's been passed right up to their property just talking about and so after what they say when the wind blow getting insane on their property it's been loaded in the yard these kids are bringing their house on the shoe they're bringing their home they're being greeted and too much of a crazy scene we don't own this we don't need this and there are a lot of those who may have projects and we feel about who know that will be there every day until we get together again.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, thank you so much. Next, uh, next is Mr. Richardson, Mr. Richardson, call that Mr. Richardson.
Hi, I'm Dean Richardson, letter twenty one nine six, sorry, twenty one, twenty one east um most of us didn't know about this half and then we got a notice saying hey we have town hall meeting on the eleventh and on the eleventh I said hey this is going to be on the doctor's twelve we were sure it's not going to be on the doctor's twelve the reason we are here today is because the zoning has passed to include mineral extraction dimensional stone on that day on twelve that's why we're here today but we were sure it's not going to happen. Mining mining is the extraction of geological materials from the earth cannot be grown on agricultural processes extraction which you do headline or or this is mining these gentlemen who are investors pay a lot of attention to dimensional stone extraction and metal dust little noise detractor and significantly no property loss value there are multiple studies showing this is not true this does contain silica and possibly asbestos all accounts causing it will go into air no matter how they put it no matter what they do unless they keep that wet twenty four hours a day is when they dry and that dust is gonna be in the air there are thousands and thousands of waters used for stone and only some of average cycle they cannot use the same water day in and day out over and over and over this will be extremely valid anybody that's looked on the granite or been around the granite knows how well will sound child is on the granite it will affect our property value of the thirty six thirty six percent according to some studies one of the things I can't random finding these gentlemen here purchase the property without thinking what to do for our community did they think that maybe walk down to the area to start this what does a sixty two percent black African American thirty two percent white and ten percent hence spanning with over forty two percent of the age of fifty why did they choose this city why did they choose this area they never live here they're not wanna live here they don't want to live here we learn once they have to live here and are gonna have to deal with the the dust the traffic the noise and what is gonna do to the children that live in schools and they hear they're very close by.
Thank you, thank you, dear. Mr. Randall first, right on.
Good evening, my name is Randy Purvis, I'm eleven nineteen thirty six, Prestonville Drive and currently the vice president of the Prestonville Homewards Association which represents forty three families and on current division of odds that if this project was true and we build on his home builder would be known against mine I stand here and ask you to reject the proposal to submit a settlement request by that and ask you to reject the missing that proposed operational viable as standard for in order or concern twenty three dash fifteen approved by by this board on September fourth this year such that we understand that certain the ordinance allow the extraction to be placed as close as fifty feet from the interior property values now if the investor presentation of the location of our operation is in our set we have to be on the closest of mine however if you go across the street I think closer than that and I know that this is a five meter street nearest home um but this appears to be the only way to go beyond our technical profits and that's our best operation however there is nothing that are being nothing stopping that for any other company who has self operated to expanding the operation up to the fifty foot of the set for the ordinance so we must assume that operation will occur for the pre-propriation properties implied as entered how this would adversely affect adjacent properties this reminded Randy's second judgment for Mr. Spades I hold operations shall not adversely affect adjacent properties I emphasize the word not exception they shall not adversely affect adjacent properties there are three ways to activate this proposed operation will adversely affect my personal property properties in my subdivision and other properties in our case of closed site the first way to close them will begin first impact operation goals is this company's division of insurance section section four consists of noise generated shall not exceed standard set for EPA standard said that fifty five vessels should not be exceeded investment insurance investor poses different drills and saw the operating system stated the um the other meaning um running through a hundred and twenty vessels trucks heavy equipment operating between ninety nine vessels fifty feet a hundred vessel uses sixty six point zero two above EPA standard the TMS standard said fifty five vessels they would be at least a hundred and seventy eight feet away over twice as far as most activities from the nearest home now they state that the tree is pretty sounder news sounds like however and not taking into account that the mine that they create will be created in a vertical stone peak directly sound towards the holes on September Road further evidence that the sound is by expectation is at fifty feet adversely affecting these properties coming section twenty thirteen of this code part nine section two states that for farming issues equipment producing noise from the sound connects to seven vessels shall be located no closer than a hundred feet to the nearest residence now why should farmer vessel be located if you know twice as far as the vessels are these measures vessels they have they don't create some I don't understand why fifty feet is the standard where she said for this um clearly noise related by this extraction is will firstly affect the adjacent properties decided that it should therefore be denied second this proposal firstly impacted properties on this national investor played with the studies they have researched shall normally impact properties changing that they use other seventy five year old to a hundred year old minds other than the granite cap in Georgia and through the old old town minds that are old 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 and what they say is true today when 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 properties go up they are all going to stay right but what this study does not count is what happens to the mining opens and that's what the initial what happens studies are shown between twenty five and thirty five percent of the value of the homes that are adjacent to within within a half mile of that mine which aren't ten percent which is within a half mile will lose immediately twenty five thirty five percent okay that's important so let's 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 give the value of that say wow you're only speaking to the percent and so the different companies are over four hundred thousand dollars that's sixty thousand dollars that they propose to take out of my mind that will never never be in that today I will you as a statement that is the initial energies they will adversely affect myself and my community financially and about this fifty percent of revenues and taxes will be taken out the media that amounts to four hundred fifty dollars are quite asking we be good because of their activities by that means my my new over twenty thousand dollars just my community will be removed from the tax base because of the devaluation of our property that will occur from this so what has to happen of the way that we are talking about taxes which means that every person in the community in our economy will be adversely affected because their taxes will raise finally concerned about these activities could do and having all your water made in the future it screams and water shows on our property rains from the rock goes on the three by six level first is the elevator which is the source of drinking water from New County I found this river downstream the second place the um water go is in the Haynes Creek watershed which ends into the main point of the lake which is the primary reservoir for our country which would affect everybody for that the third place now attending water goes down into the offer there will come a point where they didn't know enough they were going to affect the offer and in fact they wanted to do is either chemicals will taminate that offer or they will they will end up untriumphal to the point in removing water from the offer that the wells that are in that offer will allow me to get water for that the potential of these activities to destroy the quality of water for some people subway that I've heard should be denied this application if you put national government on where are the members of the county economic center where I see this is the problem nowhere where are the structures eyes and support for this policy I was just gonna be an economic move for them nowhere where are the evidence people of some wonderful access to our community nowhere I have no intention of showing that that proposal of the gentleman's name here and is wondering if some of your citizens in private this is a terrible terrible idea if you're good Mr. Purvis you say that benefits these two people are ready to be adversely and have a good result a strong urge to reject both association and someone who is ready who would add to this terrible idea.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, hello, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, my name is Tony Purvis, as of nineteen ninety six Prestonville Drive you can love remember our subdivision of that we are the closest subdivision in the county when I heard about this was absolutely devastating I gave up the county home in fourteen years fifteen seven home in front of my mind and we keep loving our community we love our community it is quiet we have homeowners who value that quiet it is tight it is a wonderful place to live it is on my backyard is a heaven it is trees it is birds it is even if they are not getting there are animals all over the place they have a minor degree that is maybe twice the amount of cattle these are real things that are gonna change because as the zoning as the September twelfth ordinance states they can bring their mining extraction operations to fifty feet from my property that property that property line can have fifty feet away a drill that makes a hundred and twenty vessels set if you think that line had my property value I don't have a wonderful life it's not it's not a way of caution and the thing that is yes where they're starting is where they're starting but they have the right to explain more than is as written to go anywhere in their property within fifty feet of the edge and the rock goes all the way past the edge there is no way that commercial operations can stop when they get closer to my house because of built out of my house so all the dust and all the sand will be fifty feet from my property line at some point now to say that it will affect my property's value if you were looking around and someone said there's dimensional stone right behind you will that make you go oh good or would it make you go well I don't need that because as soon as they find out that at any point in the future they can come within fifty feet of my property line that might someday be their property line they can reject that area and people want to know so absolutely is an absolutely full effect of property value and in the case in our home because on the adjacent property we have a heavy that's here I cannot see the value that they keep on the ground the fact that granite is will will remain a thing if this land is not used this way when a lot of children will not have silica in their ear if it doesn't become this use. When a lot of children will not have silica in their ear if it doesn't become this use. There are a lot of people that stick here, because the property value you're talking about isn't, isn't contained to the people that are adjacent. It takes, it takes five miles scale down of losing property value. Hundreds of homes who have spent their whole lives building their property value, that that's the biggest thing, will be damaged. And we don't want that. I'm a hundred percent this is what it is, sir. But that's, but that's even where they call the complaints, where we're gonna deal with levels of noise that are gonna disturb the wildlife, and why did that make it so much in the last fifteen years, and why do you think? I don't see any upside. They're gonna create four to five jobs based on their own statement. These are many local in which you would vote to do that against the boss and the quality of my classes, all of these owners, and all the other ones that I have to realize they were part of this too. I have to ask you to consider your role in protecting the quality of the people in our county and affecting our property value. I vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. I think just more along the other speaker, I do want to remind everyone that I am, we are monitored and clocked, and we're gonna make sure that we give equal amount of time to both sides. We want to afford everyone an opportunity to articulate the message tonight. Next to you will be Mr. Andy Carson, Andy Carson, come up first.
Hello, Andy Carson, twenty-one, twenty-four seventy-one, Lake Shore Drive, Harrow Shore. I'm asking to share you with the next show of light. We're different than those three on our own, we got a dive plane, few who we use, uh, we got one of the waters. Matter of fact, I'm not getting to do us water because there's too much rock. And that's one of my concerns is water system, there's no way they're gonna be able to recycle all the water and get all that out there. And they were saying the other night, it's gonna be like two trucks a week. Well, they get two trucks a week, it's like, ten foot by ten foot by ten foot, under seventy-five pounds for a big foot, that's under seventy-five thousand pounds for each rock. I don't know what that's gonna do for our residents and the fridge, going over the Yellow River, probably nothing good. And you're looking at, they didn't tell us how long this operation will last, but if they did, nine to six seconds, they're talking about eleven hundred and fifty, they're talking, you're talking at least fifty, fifteen years, just don't have one go there. Unless, what they're saying is two trucks a week for the end, because that's what they said, they start two trucks, and maybe four or five a week. I don't see where that's bringing a lot of much to our, you know, it's not bringing jobs here, honestly, it's bringing more, uh, problems for our residents and repairs for that day. Crazy and everything, because, and I don't see, I still just angle to two trucks a week. There's gonna be more than that, they know that, the rock and business, it will try to be as much our clients, that's it, that's what I would do. And like people said, we're not going to, there's two hundred and thirty homes in our neighborhood that rely on our well water, which is good water. And we're not going to, there's a lot of wells, we're not necessarily, we're not talking about buildings, and it could affect everybody. But I just wish I would keep that in mind, you both disposed of the rock and air.
Thank you, Ms. Carson. Next up is Shane Ranbo, Shane Ranbo, come up.
My name is Shane Ranbo, I live in twenty-four thirties in New York, which is just a little bit northeast of where they're planning on. Uh, I tend to be meeting with the planning board, and it was not a lot, it was a lot of the captain brought up here about how extensively, well, we're gonna be a big company then, so is that viable, could it be on the market? Well, if you consider more, more usable rock than the places on the property, since we got almost a hundred acres there, it might be a whole lot bigger than mine. That hasn't been discussed at all. Uh, the thing about the, the track, I said, well, we won't use a hero for the, for the trucks coming and going, who have had to put a road in twenty. Well, coming, broke down, got a ton, going by the hole, and then ride us to the hero. I got paid from mine, somebody, I know that deal, because for that throw, that would be, because people assume that max six, when they say that until sixty-five, it's a, it's only forty-five, you have to have a crack, a crack, I, 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 so you would have to have another crack, like, just so that, as far as financial, the financial contribution to the county would be minimal, as, as they've already pointed out. Uh, unless the kind of taxes what they're taking out of your, which is really such provision, so, I, I, I don't see it as a source of income, I see it as a waste of what you're sort of, in fact, I downsized from forty acres, although I have a trail which I want officially, because it, uh, because it's in the watershed protection area, because I have a technical sub-conditions coming around. Though with the entire, we decided to downsize while the same community is closing here, are there reasonable wells for my restaurants, a lot of that, and that area can be, well, can be, can be a good second, and save that there. And the low that rock, getting something of this sort. Now, fortunately, they did not water or pass up on the street, and there are two wells on my property, those two wells, uh, were, of course, just jettisoned, we, you had negative, uh, but, uh, fortunately, we used the tenant's water and skip. Uh, the one person who could speak to me about this, I think, uh, the, the, for the happy end, I'm not only considering so long. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Next up is Ms. Carter, and hold, and hold, please, all of the songs.
I'm sure. Hi. Okay, my name is Diane, I'm on the Rockdale County, raised my three kids here, I was in education, for thirty years.
Can you just all, can you say your initials?
Speak loud.
Thank you.
Oh, my, okay, I actually live in Covington, man, uh, thirty-five women, John, seven to three, no losses, um, a retired, in-coming teacher, who worked in Rockdale, so a career professional.
So, Ms. Carter, are you a resident of Rockdale, or are you a resident of New County?
I'm a resident of New County, my daughter has a house that's actually adjacent to the fence of the Zingere Road renovation. She's disabled, she has had a brain tumor and has effects on her, on her, on her, on her.
And you're speaking on that?
I'm speaking on her.
Where, where is it?
Um, she put a house up in San Diego before she found out about the mine, and so now she's very stressed out about that, and so worried about how the property value is going to be affected by having a mine, because who wants to live in a house with a mine that's just over the fence? Um, we're concerned, I am concerned about the effects of the, the noise pollution, the air pollution, this being right, actually, at the border of where this would be, she would definitely be affected. Um, the only good thing I'll say is, is the factors of, um, the animal, the environment of the animals, I guess I might have to say the bike baby, because there are a lot of animals that, um, have, I don't know, you said, but my main concern is my daughter and her health, and what's gonna happen with her house, just a several cars, and the animals, so man, we're, we're worried about, at least having one mine in the back door.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
That's my mom's.
Thank you so much, appreciate you coming out and having me, but next up is Ms. Andrew Miller, hold up, Ms. Miller, Ms. Andrew Miller.
Good evening. Um, I live in twenty-four fifty, Harrow Shore, in Harrow Shore. Um, I am an advocate, I have also survived, um, pneumonia, which is part of my illness, I have almost lost my life twice now. I wanna know if there is a hobby of the environment and the health impact study for me to read. Um, I also want to know how you all would feel having lung issues, you know, they're supposed to be aligned with possible meniscus, chondrolytes, psilocyphus, something that causes something called psilocyphus, which is a permanent and damage-wounding disease that there is no cure for. If, uh, this goes through, I want a mental guarantee that they will pay for any and all medical expenses due to any kind of lung issues from their project. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next up is, thank you, Ms. Carter, Ms. Carter.
Okay, I'm Suki Roselle, is that right? I live in twenty-seven O'Nath, in Sycro Road. Uh, a lot of, if we started out for other people's become, I would, but one thing that I did not recognize that I thought was important is the potential, well, one thing, the naturally occurring with vessels, I didn't on the internet see a map of the US and this area where that has been found, and, um, and this is a map of the US, so it's not pinpoint, but it definitely shows that that is something that needs to be, um, checked out before approving this, because the map shows that we do have that in the rocks in our area. The other thing was radon. I recently had my house checked for radon, and I was gonna have a debate program done, the man came out, it, it's happened, so after the house I'm in right now, I live in another house in Rockdale County, not that long ago, it was the current house, which is so close to the mine, so I've got all houses checked for radon, and I was, so I made a comment to him about what appeared to be inconsistency for this area, and, and trying to, uh, prod him for information about, about, about changes, I was asking about whether there are areas that are hot for radon, and what he pointed out was, what he's aware of are areas that are near where they have that mine, and he gave a number of, of eleven point five something was what he gave, for the radon. So, we have this kind of work going on, there is a reasonable potential that what a normal rock deal counting for rock properties is someone had cut off a point where you have to have remediation, that that level could go up, but that could be an additional cost on homeowners. Um, I went recently to the, a program that you had on reimagined Rockdale, a five-year plan, and, um, tried to make a little bit of help, my suggestion, et cetera, I was a little bit surprised that one of the things that I saw on the table was the suggestion that rock forests might be something that people would wanna add as I reimagined Rockdale Plan. I also saw some that I really liked on a convention having restaurants, uh, people lived above the restaurants, et cetera, that sort of thing, and I asked a woman there that was assisting, trying to help people understand what they're looking at, about how with accounting, this seems like a good idea, but what can the county, I mean, investor wants to do that kind of thing? What can the county do to encourage someone to do it or to not do it? What difference does it make what I, I want the investor to do? And she pointed out that, you know, well, as a, for instance, the, the young have done analysis of Rockdale in the area, which sounds a lot like an analysis to a city, investors such as these, it's, so my tax salary is with to help me encourage people to come and start for it, you know, within a mile of my own, this, this seems like a totally inappropriate accounting, you're doing to the citizens to make. But I'm trying to be a little bit optimistic, I do think that, um, we do have potential for this block. I mean, it is absolutely beautiful, the property I've done, I've logged the plant site, the property, I've mentioned the city, the city's needing, is action, rocks, I volunteer to write it down, there's a difference in what those people see when they go to writing on, what they see at the no amount, because, you know, one areas that have, well, has had forests, et cetera, it's totally different thing. My property has, um, has had very little disturbance. What you see in those first areas is a rock directly on top of the rock, I, I, I so far I've logged that, this part of my property I might have access to for a full year even, and I have logged forty-eight different climbing plants directly on the rock. What happens is, is the vegetation, um, it may not be yay, but you have a wide array of moss and lighting, and there's twelve different lighting for the problem, and you have trees that literally come up through cracks. This is a ecosystem that you can see it away versus, no, this takes a hundred years to repair this for damage that they're talking about doing. But it's something unique, but we ought to be trying to find a way to utilize. I walk in concerts, and then, uh, where they utilize the rock where the people love to walk through, they have a perfect dance that you walk past at one point, you have a choral player at another point, they can, uh, encourage in our community to utilize the rock, we could do some things that would be wonderful and truly give us a name as to what we can do with Rockdale County. The heat, where the news, there's no shortage of news about the heat now, one of the things that is amazing to me about the rock, I thought that it was going to be horribly hot. What I realized is that the concrete on my property, on the house, my house, that is horribly hot, when I go out on this rock with all of this moss and vegetation, and literally there's trees coming up, a lot of, uh, eastern red cedar, there's Georgia oak, there are trees that might go way into this, it is actually considerably cooler than what you have in a situation like areas of radon, which have been mined, which are very rotten areas, and, um, and are, are heat out. So, hoping that, or more of us, an earlier report, I had some numbers from some studies that similar to blast, where eighty-seven point something of the vegetation nearby the crops, et cetera, are affected by the dust from, not, not blast mines, it's, um, it's just short sight, we cannot go backwards, once this is done, we can't go backwards. At this point, we should be trying to be a little bit more positive about what we are.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. All right, next up is Ms. Cheryl Erickson. I don't know if you can ask the question. Erickson, come on, Ms. Erickson.
My name is Cheryl Erickson. I live in 222 Leck Road. I've lived there thirty-five years. I bought the house when it was a burger, specifically because I like other brands out there and I wanted to live early in my age. I spoke that night at the wedding. I actually forgot about this, what happened. In 1997, Rockdale County became a county on the road. I was right after I married today. And my youngest son, who's in middle school, Thomas School, was going back and forth to school, and every morning, the school nurse was calling me, "Come pick up his son, let's get some parents." So that went on for probably two or three weeks, ninety-seven, and he used to want to go to school. And I had a counselor, a counselor, and he was getting free to go to school for time, for Thomas School. When I got a letter in mail from Rockdale County that they can't come up to any of them and test the wells in the area after they paved the road. And my well was contaminated. My well was a drill well in Rockdale, making a new brand in Rockdale County. It's not a four wells drill well. And I forgot about that many days. So that was, it happens, it contaminated well. This was just trucks and grating and coming out of the gate. It contaminated when I drilled well, I had a cap on it and everything else in the mound. It contaminated. So that really bothers me. And everything else that has gone in tonight, obviously I grew it completely. I did want to add one other thing, I'll probably be honest, I discovered this. Mr. Uh, one thing, I'm going to be a chatter, but I noticed on the board of the local Georgia Rivers downtown, isn't the whole organization to keep rivers or streams in clean water and polluted and contaminated with water sheds there on Georgia? John, we need to do that here too. We know that this granite mine is eight point seven miles from the river Melville, which is creeks that go all the way to that. There's a creek in my backyard that I fought a subdivision behind me because of that. There was too much granite, et cetera, and the soil won't reach. Not a soul of those suspects, and I fought it and I won. So I know these things are true, I know they happen. And one more thing I would mention, again, I'm going to be honest with you, is a lot of people in Rockdale County right here today that are posting this. If you ask them all, the word in Rockdale, in Rockdale County is a paid, unpaid county, okay? So what's the meaning? They deny planning, maybe they've got some amazing things they deny it. There's two guys around on the board there, million liters, talking about the water, the dangers, and pollution, and still have a special name is Quater. And they denied it because they had knowledge of this. So if they denied it, what benefit is Rockdale County? What were the tax dollars that were gaining from this? Like you've mentioned, the property test, the windmill. So you're going to lose that right there, you have to raise another property tax, but there's no benefit. So we know one thing, one thing about counties that we can play the game. We're not here for granite mining, it's not because there's only half of the nation that has to be like a water park, international water park. And granite, why can't we do something like that, or bring in insurance? I mean, it's beautiful, something that you can do to benefit people, to bring them to Rockdale County. Insurance for the family, somebody can, can do to, to do anything, or even start a green running one. To use granite for better purpose instead of polluting and destroying the wells. And like the High Rock Village, we're trying to protect the waters, we're trying to get the process. And the, the well may be contaminated. And if you know anything about granite, when they start mining, they're asking, a crack in the rock, the shit can go down, can do a lot of damage. We don't have no oil, we're mining, and all the fracking that was happening, stuff happens. And these gentlemen that talk about it, they're saying they don't anticipate, or they'll try and do, they don't. So basically, do you want to send it on the side? Do you want to hear? Is it all on the line? Is basically all that?
Thank you, Ms. Andrew. Next up is Ms. Cindy Bagby. Ms. Bagby, Ms. Cindy Bagby, come on, Ms. Bagby.
Welcome, Ms. Bagby. Hello, my name is Cindy Bagby. I live in 3610 A14, I'm sure there are over two. I had originally set up a speaking, kind of in favor and kind of against. I would like to know if there will be an estero account for the reclamation fund that is tied to inflation. I want to know what happens if this company goes bankrupt before they're able to do the reclamation? What happens to our community if they have to abandon the project? And there's a big gaping hole? Also, I think that we should be testing the water supply before mining to find out how much silicates, asbestos, and radon are already in the water system and have a baseline test of all the wells of the neighbors that are in this area, maybe within five or 10 mile radius. And I need to know what contingencies will be put in place to defend the citizens against spillage, against unrest? What happens when there's a flood? I've been on the roadside of the county, and there was a flood a few years back, it shut down the Yellow River, the bridge in the town. What's the plan for dealing with a flood when all this dust? And they say it's going to wash right into the river and have some leak into the drinking lake. They say that the alternative use for this is to put houses on the ground. But then I heard tonight that we weren't able to build on the ground because the county would not put in sewer or water. That means we're not going to put houses in there. It would be a better use of this ground if we could put walking trails in and help people around their county whose way. Also, I'm very concerned about the health of the citizens. And if we can have an estero account that will pay for the medical bills that result from this money operation, you know, that would be good. And also, that somebody brought up that they would be digging into the rock and creating an amphitheater which would funnel this town. And that's, you know, that's really not good. Also, I've been shopping for a dishwasher recently. And the very loud dishwashers are fifty-one decibels. And we had a sound tester in our home, and it's got wood floors and radon. For our reason, that fifty-one decibels was too loud. We wanted it nice and loud. Our kids don't listen to the house, and they cry it. Now, I realize that I don't, we're terribly close, but something can be good. So it's going to be really loud, and it's, when it gets too loud, it gets hard to think. So, there's that. The heat island threat is a very good point, something brought up, that by exonerate, by moving vegetation, it would expose more of the rock to create a heat island. It's not a bad thing with those warming, so. Okay, is that good? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, we, this, this morning, for us, for Ms. Andrew.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Marryn Press. I live in 2724 in Barrow Room. I'm new to the neighborhood, it was just a house about a year ago. But I have lived in Rockdale County since 2012. And I think Rockdale County, I think this is all we like here. I am a grocery truck driver. That's what I do for a living. So I know how loud the trucks are, and I know there's not going to be two trucks coming out every week. You're going to have waste trucks, you're going to have the water trucks, you're going to have the trucks that have fallen off the stone. Those trucks make a tremendous amount of noise. And if you don't put that, put a stop sign at that intersection, be prepared for there's a lot of rock systems in car accidents. Is that worth allowing you to put a line here? No, I don't think so. If you have a permanent intersection in the road, you know how fast it can get on there. And on that curve, there is a thirty-five, the Rockdale County thirty-five, we're not able to see the driveways that are also there. So we're all going to have to deal with the trucks. We're going to have to deal with the diminished property value, possible contamination of our water sources. When I moved this front house, that's the second house that I've had in Rockdale County. At my age, my husband and I bought that house thinking this is going to be our final home. We put in a grass pool to make our older bears a little more pleasurable. When we did that, we put radon in the back of our house. We didn't put a firework on the block, and we tried to keep it to a small footprint. And when we did that, we had seven days of non-stop rock busting. I still hear it in my hearing. They pushed through that granite rock at six and a half feet. And at six and a half feet, they were going to stand in still. Fortunately, I don't have well. But it's my understanding that there was a well on the property that they purchased. There's also a body of water that's on that property they purchased. There's a lake on wherever you want to call it. They're not going to deal with a brand, any type of runoff going into those. And as with granite, when you break through, you could have cracks, fractures, deeper in there, and water will go where water wants to go. And there's too many residents of Rockdale County who will lose everything they've been alive to do to allow this to happen. I don't want that. Do you want that in your backyard? They've talked about showcasing Rockdale's brand. They've talked about how it's going to bring money into Rockdale County. There are four or five employees who are specialized in equipment operators. They're going to be streets. They're going to be brought in to operate equipment to do the line. They're not going to employ anybody from Rockdale County. Their corporation is only a year old. They have no history of doing this type of work. They have no plan. They have that, they have no strategic plans. So what's going to happen when they contaminate our water sources? They're going to sell the stone to another party, who's then going to manage, convert it to whatever they headstones, monuments, whatever they want to do with that stone. How is Rockdale County going to get revenue from this project? They're not. You're not going to receive any tax dollars. Where is your LLC based out of? It's not here. Where is it? I believe it's Milton, and it's a residential house. They have no history. And if they put this into plan, and this is their only project that they've had, and no history of what they've been doing in the past year, this is going to run a lot longer than this, this is the Rockdale County know about. So someone's going on the scene, but we're not seeing. And it's not benefiting us whatsoever. And I hope that you see fit to vote against this. Because we believe that you value us, your citizens of Rockdale County, more than you value this project, because it's not going to hurt anything to anybody, except for at least you that we know about. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The lady Williams.
Good evening. My name is Lily Williams. And I reside at Fourth Avenue, English Oak Road, Congress, Georgia. I've lived here pretty much my entire life, in this farm. It's been really interesting to hear your different perspectives. And originally wanted to raise both concerns and amplify your perspective from the straightest thing, specifically to a double, but potentially to the max, to property values and the long-term economic impact that these minds impose for the citizens. So in preparation for this meeting, I was researching. I found a publication produced by a renowned professor named Jan Wright, who's a senior advisor at the University. And she ran out of expertise in operating the impact analysis. And she conducted a statistical study in Ohio, determining the problem of property values. Yes, true, prior reasons. Her findings refer to Iowa and Theoville, proximity of the land to the city of San Diego. The question, how can values, as was mentioned in her study, to assign a degree presented in the homes located in the line? These are profound, while to Rockdale County specifically, those living in those parts of the eight, and the celebrations of her, our homes and all the structures. They are best with our future. Because of the property values, it's not just a matter of that moment. It's about saving our communities across area. It's something that increases the property values, and push home there is a dimension discussed, generalizing the economic stability of the wrong quality life. And in conjunction with the potential benefits of the proposed stone line against these critical concerns, the insights from this professor's study have supported the need for thorough comprehensive evaluation of those mining impacts on our community, our homes, or the destruction of their assets, and less protect financial security of Rockdale County homeowners. And thank you so much for your attention. I urge you to consider these essential factors as well as other strategies as we deliver our information to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not a student of the opposition, but it's, it's Captain Lynn. It's Lynn.
My name is Captain Lynn. I live in 750 Main Street in Millset. I shared a conversation with Chris, my everyone who's spoken before me today, particularly the last few speakers about these guys and their history. I thought it was better if you guys could have did the game. And last, and I want to say, is someone doesn't know what they're doing, come in and start destroying Parker County to the detriment of everyone who lives around it. I live a little over a mile from the projected site on Zegarway in Millset. And my husband and I actually own a granite outcrop. That was once the site with the quarry, where when the road and I can hunt, this granite was mined through the foundations of many of the houses in Millset Village, including our own, as well as the former Millset apartment. We have glorious granite on our outcrop. But like all of the other small quarries in Rockdale County, our outcrop has large pavement and is served for close to a century. If you look back historically, you will find that there are a lot of little outroper that were little former quarries, such as a lot of the carpet that they own, that were mine or the mine back in the olden days, okay? Rockdale, as you well know, has never been decal on Central Road or anything what I can do with those mining operations. And you have to think about why this has never happened before. All right? As the owner of an outcrop, I can tell you that people know full well what they are buying, when they buy property, and take an outcrop. It is just... it is generally unmovable land. So there are a lot of options for investors when it comes to making a profit. Unlike the alpros, in this case, we bought our alpro to preserve it and to protect it, not to exploit it and destroy it to make a profit. Had they done a little research prior to purchasing this property, they would have known that we do not currently have mining operations in Rockdale County. In fact, it wasn't even allowed on this land until three weeks ago, when the three of you unanimously approved a tax amendment to the table of committed users to now allow mining in the area of Rockville County. That decision has all the appearances of having been done to facilitate their application. And that disturbs me greatly. Perhaps that's an issue for another day. But had you not done that, they would not be here now. What I'm really going to talk about, second act, is the fact that granite alpros are sensitive and unique ecosystems. If you take the time to appreciate that an alpro is not just a rock, you will see a beautiful wilderness of plants that are in a protected environment with different plants and trees around here. I know why I heard about this because we've engaged in conservation symbolism to impart natural resources in a safe and affordable as well as several renowned expert experts on granite alpros of the P. one region. There were plants that were on an alpro that existed. And there were specimens of one of them that are now at the State Department of Gardens because they are so rare, it took them weeks to figure out what they were. And it was so cruel, they needed to move them into their alpro. Okay? There are many other alpros within just a couple miles radius of ours that are federally documented, serving a document that early in nature species have been found. Most of those only occur in handful of locations. I don't know if that's only part of the area's wrongness or not, but y'all need to be aware of this. It's a very small area. Okay? The commissioners who held these seats before you here are not the alpros in Rockdale County. It's not provided in some protection in the future. Just 15 years ago, Rockville County's Seabass Land Conference Plan recommended that the county be preserving and protecting the alpros, not extorting them for profit. They went so far as to map the alpros in Rockdale County. I'll remind us, I'm going to urge you to look at this plan and what was known before you, before you vote. Just so you can see the background. Okay? They mapped the alpros. So it's a huge concentration. Most of these alpros are in the Rockville County. Of course, we got the ones that south. But if you look at that map, they're all up here. Guess what? That's on the A-line. Okay? As commissioners, you guys are going to face some major decisions since you have been, certainly in the last few years, that are going to change the future of what Rockdale is and will be. Okay? You've got a huge legacy already being built for you. So I'm going to ask you to encourage each of you to ask yourselves whether going against the will of the people on this, the environmental devastation of this, and potentially other alpros that mining will bring in Rockdale County, and ignoring the wisdom of those who came before you, are things that you want as part of your legacy? Because granite is not thrown back. I sincerely hope that you will do the right thing and deny us what Seabass Alpros so far will make our family unique and beautiful and should not be exploited for profit. Keep the rock in Rockdale. Thank you.
Okay, Governor Mark, you look at that and you vote. You heard all those votes. Make sure that you follow what he said, that you heard again, and rest of the applicants. We make sure we avoid opportunity for each speaker. And as a person, I don't want to give that kind of argument.
Yes, that definitely ends up very much, or very much, and stupid for a problem.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners, for all night and listening to our presentation with comments from 15 folks who spoke against our application. You know, we have to be here and understand a lot of the concerns, a lot of them are heated concerns, that we believe we addressed a lot that has come through the organs. But one thing that's important to understand, a lot of folks were looking at the alternatives. At no point in time did we are aware that all these laws were together. And, you know, people say, hey, A or B, go after the site plan. Now we have the enemy, and I think that's because John's a little for you. If the R's are over potential, and you put enough of houses on that potentially. So we don't want to give that. We think the vast most office property is obviously our facility, which, you know, we are still continuing to associate with aggravated mining, which is not completely as perfect as you imagine. But, you know, we want to say, you know, like my partner discussed, a lot of citizens are best, they're part of science, and organs, it's just global enforcement. And, you know, we want to make this our home and our headquarters to think could be beneficial to any beneficial, for a number of reasons, some of which we have not in our reservation and continue to do. So we could, this was community for that, like, just got one of these. And I promise we provide that picture. Chairman, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, thank you again for the time this evening in consideration of this project. We feel we need to be excited about Rockdale County. We also thank my neighbors, citizens of Rockdale County, who attended tonight, keep the race concerned, support by supporting the project, and one to commend for providing advice to the neighbors that they wanted to have. Citizens of Rockdale County, concerns for our county, good friend, and neighbor, any others tonight. We understand this is an unfamiliar process that may involve. We are welcome to feedback along and to thoughtful consideration of these concerns. Our presentation is designed to tell you the technical, scientific, and legal studies to help educate everybody about the plan and our process. Hopefully, we be concerned that citizens of Rockdale County, who or commission may have observed our institution ways. As we have shown, it is our intent at minimum to fully comply with all applicable ordinances and laws. We are a rare factor in the county's overall enforcement of the score posts and licenses, and we expect nothing less than the ultimate success. We have shown that our plan can watch what you almost see applicable orders, permissions, and distractions. Furthermore, the ordinance requires all following to be submitted and approved prior to the adoption of our registration evidence, a drainage plan, a dusting plan, a noise mitigation plan, emergency operation plan, and confidence of our nation. These plans are necessary to comply with any all applicable rules and regulations. As you can see, there are some further requirements for us to comply with to design our Rockdale County before we proceed. These areas are designed for the safety and well-being of neighbors. If you are approved, who look forward to working with my organization, Rockdale, make sure that these parts, thank you again, everybody for your time.
Thanks a lot. Very great. That is everybody who signed up to the public speaking. So we may close earlier. So I would ask, Commissioner, you have a very personal feedback. Can I start with a personal question?
Yes. Good evening. I would like to see something done, an analysis of the property, to see if there are any endangered, anything on the property. If old, fond, anything to see. Because I do not want to disturb anything that is, that we would have property impact. So if we didn't have that kind of analysis, I would like to see that also. I think the big issue, that was one of the bigger, larger ones. You said that you're going to do a noise mitigation plan. You said that you're going to do a, we're going to, how are we going to address the level of silicone in the air? We have heard about concerns about health issues, like asthma, which I'm asthmatic. So that's huge to delve us with neat extra when we're trying to bring that back. Clear passenger, what do you think? You said that you're doing a comprehensive environmental and other plans of action. So I definitely want to see those. If you have the time, right, when those things would be available. Because what I don't want to do is approve something like this and then all of the things, all of the things are not taken into consideration. Have not been fully worked out. Because these people, if they were approved at the same time, around this, so it would be my.
Of course. Maybe this all just just. Yeah, so then you, Commissioner, I'll probably appreciate the points. Just a few things here, you know, in terms of the, if you have a look at the endangered fauna and other animals, you know, one thing to stress again, of these 90-plus acres, the specialty permit that you're seeking here is only focused upon the 5.8 acres of the site plan. Nothing else, you can read, reading as is, because that actually serves as a buffer. All of the focus of this site plan is just the rock, where, you know, trees obviously can't grow and animals are not significantly affected. So that's one point. In terms of these tests, I know, I appreciate you bringing that up. We spoke with our experts, we listened. There are, there are, there is none of the test's problem on this rock. The only test's problem happens at processing facilities. So we just cut the data off, and then the data processing and polishing. That's where, if any, and maybe the final risk is just based on our, based on our.
Can I give noise to the residents?
Sure, sure, absolutely, yes. And then, and then we are, we have committed noise, being planned. It's of course going to be, we're going to organize everyone above beyond that. Absolutely. All of those concerns are valid and that is just one of these. We're glad for your concern.
Does anyone have any questions for that?
Yes. So my question has to do with revenue and tax dollars in your alpro. So if you could explain how the granite process, how that would create a tax charge on your alpro.
Sure. And so basically, what happens is we cut these large blocks of rocks to be a fine presentation. Then customers buy those blocks by the unit foot, if they're revenue per unit foot. And those range is anywhere from, you know, $5 to $18 per unit foot. Revenue quality of the granite. So you can see some of the granite quickly inside of all of them. And then that is, that is sold. They buy that and they can do large blocks. They come and pick it up. And then that revenue is revenue for our business. So revenue for the business might obviously are operating expenses, and that is just taxable income. In our initial estimates, initial modeling, I guess, you know, it's a decent couple of million dollars in taxable income for the neighborhood. And that's basically, obviously, supply and demand. But it's, it's not just, so that's one of the points. And that's, I believe, very interesting question, but you know, it's not. But the other thing to think about is, yes, so there's four or five employees on the site. And then, you know, those are our employees who are employees for, for cutting. So that's jobs. So there's income taxes from that. And there's contracts, trucking companies, that also, if there's a factory that supply our end processes, there's additional income from that. So that's just one of the points. Then we plan to commit to putting our headquarters. Here, mainly are, mainly Rockdale County, our headquarters. Obviously, not on the site, but in, in, in the office space in Rockdale. And that, our plan is hard to grow. Our experience with spaces has spanned over two decades. We've successfully owned this number of operations, both externally where we have seen the label, we've done the label. And that becomes, this becomes sort of the headquarters for operations in other states, like Tennessee, Colorado, so on and so forth. But those employees all sit in our office headquarters here in Rockdale. So it's not just the former employees. I know it's easy for people to say, oh, they're just training, or they're just training employees or, and trying to dismiss some of those components. But we ask to rely on the hard side of the map, the map that lies to us. And so, you know, our government and piece to make is our headquarters. We will never leave our roots in our home. But that, that operation has significantly been more of those. Those employees have income taxes, jobs, and this education. This, a lot of those have been set, you know, this has, the granite is improved, we agree. And, you know, I think that becomes educational opportunities for the youth. And speaking of, I think one way, that is a point there, is really, you know, the buffers are significant. You know, the folks that talk about their development is nowhere near our site. You know, it's significantly at the back, and not even close to our site plan. So I think, you know, those are important things to consider. But any factor, a hidden element, we care about that. We want, I mean, we know cities are coming here, we know on the rock is beautiful. And, you know, we think it's a good place to showcase it. Like it's government building, changing people's homes, the countertops. Those are multiple factors that go into this. So it is, you know, I expect. Yeah?
Good, good, very good. Let me just take a moment to say to all of our Rockdale residents, thank you so much for coming out tonight. As we repeated throughout the season, no decisions are made tonight. We do appreciate each and every one of 15-plus speakers that come up and spoke tonight. All of those information is only happening, applicants as well as our residents here in Rockville County. We definitely take into deep consideration by this board. Again, thank you. And for those of you all who want to leave at this point, I would pause for that essence.
The next item on the agenda is FLU case 23-03, RZ case 23-12, and SUP case 23-05. The applicant is D.C. Block, represented by Michelle Battle of Battle Law. Before you, the applicant has three requests. First request is to rezone this, to amend the future land use map from medium density to office institutional for development of a data center. Second request is to rezone the subject properties, which is a total of 71.5 acres located at 1726 and 1830 Farmer Road from R1 to O9, Office Institutional, for the construction of a data center, and to request a special use permit to allow for the installation of an electrical substation. Okay, all right. Just to highlight a few points of interest for this property, I mean, for this development, I should say. The applicant is intending to construct three data centers for a total of 450,000 square feet. Each data center will be 150,000 square feet. The applicant has indicated that the campus will have two points of access, one along Farmer Road and one along Lester Road. Lester Road is the primary access, while Farmer Road is going to be the secondary access. The applicant has also indicated that this campus will have a security fence around it as well as a guard station located off Lester Road. This is not intended to be an open campus. This, again, is supposed to be a security campus because, again, this is a data center, that'd be data warehouse. So, again, think of a social media company, Google, and things of that nature. So now you expect to have a lot of people on site. The applicant has indicated that a total between six and seven employees will be on site as well as, I'm sorry, I apologize, as limited vehicle traffic as well due to the number of employees. There is indicated that the applicant may have the platform stream buffer because there are existing ponds located on the property. However, they will have to, stormwater will have to go outside, go out on site to determine if it's intermittent. Essentially, what that means is if it's actually naturally flowing pond or it only has water when it rains. Also, as well as to kind of indicate how large the substation pad is, it's 350 by 550 square feet. With all our applications, staff has provided a technical report for you. Staff did recommend approval with 12 conditions. Uh, also, the planning commission did recommend approval of all three applications as well. The applicant is here to answer, uh, to present this case.
Okay, all right. Ms. Battle?
Good evening. Michelle Battle with Battle Law. I think I'm going to keep my mask on because I've got a bit of a cold today, so I'm trying to be safe. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Havershamet, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. As staff has indicated, we are here to talk about seventeen twenty-six through eighteen thirty Farmer Road in conjunction with the request for a rezoning, the SUP and the flume for the operation of a data center. As we move to the next slide, um, the first thing is, who is DC Block? Well, DC Block is a Georgia-based company that provides secure, reliable digital infrastructure, including data centers, regional data networking and fiber network solutions for businesses. They were founded in two thousand and fourteen and they have had numerous active data centers throughout the southeast, serving as a catalyst for attracting high-technology companies. As we move to the next slide, um, we outline again the location of the proposed project at the intersection, um, at Farmer's Grove in Lester. The subject property is currently zoned, as staff has indicated, R one, with a future land use designation of medium-density residential. One of the things that we are attempting to do on this particular site with regards to the flume request is asking for a change from medium-density residential to office institutional. When we go to the next slide, you will see here that on the future land use map, you have industrial uses that are south of the site, um, as well as the orange area, which is actually for high-density residential. The site is surrounded on two sides by property that does have the low-density residential designation, but we believe that this particular site would be a suitable transition point between these higher-intensity uses and the residential community that lies behind. And so that is why we are asking for O and I, um, as opposed to going to any type of higher-intensity land use designation, because this allows for that suitable transition from the higher-intensity industrial and high-density residential into the residential community improvised. I'm somewhat of a buffer between the two, particularly when you look at the low intensity of the use that we are proposing. You go to the next slide, you will see that, um, again, you've got industrial, light industrial uses, um, in this area as well as the purple, which I believe is, uh, mixed use. Um, and even though the area that is southwest, I guess, of the site, um, is shown as residential, um, it is still subject to the high-density residential land use district, which means that at any point in time, that property could become a much more intense use. Again, what we are seeking to do is to rezone the subject property to O and I. Next. What is this project? Well, what DC Block is looking to do is to construct multiple buildings on this campus that will allow for a data facility to be built. The project will be anchored by Fortune four hundred social media companies that are planning a core network node for this area. The network node is required to carry substantial amount of the company's local data traffic and will require other companies to connect at this location. Next slide, please. When we're looking at the site plan, as already indicated, we do have two points of entry. Um, at the intersection, there is planned to be a clean space, a tree preservation area that we believe will become a opportunity for kind of a passive park area, um, at the intersection. And, um, when we look at the entrance of Lester, um, we're looking at certainly a gated area, but it will not have an actual security guard at the gate, the security will be within the interior of the buildings. When we look at the, um, the lock layout, um, you will see that the two proposed buildings along Farmer, um, with the access point will have features which you'll see on there, on our elevations, that are very aesthetically pleasing, there intends to be landscaping along the perimeter of the site, um, again, to lend towards, um, the aesthetic value as you're traveling down that right-of-way, and again, directly across from the industrial area that is further south. We are currently proposing three buildings. It is certainly possible that if we get the, um, stream buffer issue resolved, and if that is in fact not state waters, that we will be looking to place additional buildings on the site, or at least one additional building on the site. Um, and if that is the case, um, we believe that the site plan will allow for that. We also are proposing the substation, uh, on the site, which we have to obtain the special use permit for. And that is something, substations are something that you all do allow in all residential districts with a special land use permit. This substation will be an electrical substation, it will not cause any challenges or issues for the residential community in the surrounding area. Again, these are things that, um, the current zoning ordinance allows with a special land use permit in all areas. Next slide, please. What you're seeing here is, I'm going to take this mask off, it's killing me. Um, what you see here is, um, the facade design. DC Block, um, uses pre-casp panels that they use, um, for their sites, um, is very high-end type facade design. Uh, they have their own kind of coloring, which you see with the light gray, the purple, uh, and the white, um, block, um, that they are using on all of their facilities. If we go to the next slide. This gives you some sense of what the site will look like from the side as you're moving down Farmer Road. Let's see the other slide. Um, this gives you more of a sense of what it will look like off of Lester. Um, this is the area, um, that will be off to the side where I believe the, um, stream is, so you're, uh, the current pond is, and so you're looking at the, I guess, kind of south of the, of the stream, of the, of the pond, sorry. Next. And so, one of the questions that a lot of people ask are, what are data centers? Um, they are, um, produced by limited local, sorry, the environmental impact, I'm sorry, of data centers. The data centers produce a limited local pollution, um, they use no hazardous materials, they don't dispose of any environmental waste. Um, DC Block uses waterless, high-efficiency, direct-expansion cooling with economization that exceeds Georgia's regulatory requirements. Um, DC Block uses the most efficient technology available in the industry to minimize energy in the use of its facilities, and they have been recognized, in fact, for sustainability by using what is called the DEEP program. It's the Data Center Energy Efficiency Program, and it is a gold certification, and they are very proud, um, of their use of that, um, program. Next slide, please. Um, which was specifically designed for data centers and requires that they meet certain high standards, um, in order to make sure that they are energy efficient, um, that they have low carbon emissions, um, and very little waste on site. Next. As we continue with their environmental sensitivity, DC Block has a corporate commitment to sustainability and preserving the environment, and so when it comes to tree removal, they will be working to minimize, um, tree removal on the site, as I indicated, at the very front of the site where there are a number of mature trees, they are looking to maintain those mature trees in kind of a parkish, um, passive parkish area that will be, again, at the intersection. Um, in terms of water usage, uh, the data center uses a minimum amount of water, uh, they use a waterless, high-efficiency, direct-expansion cooling system, uh, that exceeds, again, local energy codes. When we look at the impact of traffic, uh, that is the beauty of this type of facility. If we looked at the R one hundred and the number of cars that will be generated by developing the property is currently zoned, um, there would be hundreds of cars coming in and out of the site. Once the project has actually been built out, you will see very few cars coming in and out. There are only roughly seven employees on the site at any one time. Um, obviously, they're not there twenty-four hours, so, um, you can expect to have a rotation of about thirty to forty employees that work on the site, um, during their particular, um, time periods, so they have staggered shifts. Um, but otherwise, other than a few deliveries, it may be a DoorDash upon occasion, you won't see a lot of activity coming in and out of the site. Um, what is estimated cost for this installation? Um, they are also going to be doing a pump station, we'll show you where they're bringing that water from, but the pump station and force-made gravity sewer has already been discussed with the, um, uh, watershed management department, and, um, they will be bringing sewer into an area that currently does not have sewer. There is water, but there is not sewer. This is the next slide. And we look at benefit, you know, at the last application you all talked about, what the benefit is to Rockdale County. Um, the beauty of data centers is it's very low impact, but it's very high impact from a monetary perspective. This building, um, will cost billions of dollars to develop over, um, once all the buildings on the site are constructed. Um, this will, even with a tax abatement, uh, this will generate annually over four million dollars annually in property taxes. Um, and we believe over that, um, ten-year period of time, that will be over forty million dollars that will be put into Rockdale's coffers, um, to help with other, um, projects and funding for other things that are very important, um, as Rockdale continues to grow. We know that that will also benefit the school systems as well, and that once all the phases are completed, uh, we will be looking at roughly sixteen thousand, sixteen million, I'm sorry, um, dollars that will be generated once all of the project is actually phased out. So we're looking at each phase being the four million, and then once everything is built out, over sixteen million dollars being generated annually, um, from the taxes from this property. Next. Um, and the beauty of this is, once this is built, you will have so many high-tech companies that will be looking to come into this space and locate here in Rockdale County because of the additional fiber optic cable deployment, um, that will be attracting other, um, companies, including Fortune five hundred social media companies, um, coming into this area, which is only going to generate additional local taxes and benefits. And though, and though every community is different, the property values near the data centers tend to rise, um, and that is because they become very attractive to those technology companies and the high-paying jobs and increased demand, uh, increases demand for real estate. Next. This is the plan that actually shows what we will be bringing, um, sewer from the area to, um, parts of the line of gravity, parts of the line are through enforcement until we get to the pump station that's actually located, um, on the site. So we'll be coming, um, uh, going north to get to the site, and again, this will bring sewer into an area that currently does not have sewer, and this is at the sole cost and expense of DC Block. Next. And I think it's important to show some of the places where data centers are currently located, um, so that you can see that data centers don't have to be located in purely industrial areas or away from the general population. Um, this particular data center in Huntsville is located south of a high school, um, and you can see where the little red dot there is, that they are located, um, more, not more than, say, five hundred to a thousand feet, um, from the back door of a local high school. Next. The Birmingham Data Center is actually directly across from a recreational facility, um, that serves the community that lies immediately behind it, so you can see the residential homes. Um, this particular site is really exciting because they have done a lot of STEM programming in support of the recreational facility, um, and have become a fairly valuable part of this community. Next. And that goes to what DC Block does within the communities that it comes into. This is not just something where they receive, but they also give back, and they do that through really encouraging STEM programs, supporting STEM programs. Uh, they go in and establish, uh, they establish in the Birmingham Data Center, for example, a STEM lab, um, at that community center. Uh, they make donations of computers, um, to local schools. Um, we even had during our meeting with planning commission, uh, a commitment to starting those STEM programs and bringing kids into, um, the data center so they can see what the operations are and what the job opportunities are that are available, um, if you apply yourself, that you might have an opportunity to do a similar type business or work within that type of business. Next. Um, again, they are very committed to their community, uh, with hundreds of local volunteer hours, every year dedicated to making every vicinity a better place to live in and work in. Next. And so, we can see here, um, in Chattanooga where they have a facility, uh, we've got the Forgotten Child Fund where they had over twenty-seven volunteer hours in buildup. In Birmingham, Alabama, they had over forty-eight volunteer hours. Um, at the Harvest Hope Food Bank in Greenville, South Carolina, uh, they had over thirty-two volunteer hours, um, all again, um, in an effort to be good neighbors. Next. And so, we are here this evening to answer any questions that you may have. Um, we were very happy to receive the support of the planning commission. Uh, there were a number of people who came out in support of the application, and it was a long evening, this evening, and I don't see a lot of those people out here this evening, um, but they did show up, and we were very appreciative of the support that we received, um, during that time, and we respectfully request, um, approval as of application at your second hearing next week. And we do have Mark Massey from DC Block here with us, uh, along with our engineer, if there's any specific questions that you would have in regards to that.
I'll yield to Commissioner Washington. Are there any questions, Commissioner?
I think I've asked, uh, probably a million questions by now, so I'm, I'm good.
Commissioner Williams, any questions?
Not right now, thank you.
All right, very good, okay. All right. Mr. Deputy Director, what's next?
Open up. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, next step, sir, is to open up the public hearing. Uh, we have one person who signed up in support, uh, and we did not receive anybody else to sign up in opposition.
Okay, go ahead and call that person up, we'll get him up.
First person is LaShelle Williams.
Ms. Williams, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Nesbit, Commissioner Washington, and Commissioner Williams. First off, I wanted to say thank you for always letting the community be heard. Um, you know, I know that y'all are always doing the, what's the best interest of Rockdale County as a whole? You can't necessarily make a decision that makes everyone happy. Um, so I, I had some neighbors here from Royal Lake Estates because we come, um, actually supporting, supporting the data center. Uh, we think that this is definitely the right direction to go. Um, as you know, we've come opposing some things in the past because we didn't think it was the best thing for safety concerns with the layout and traffic, um, how it negatively impacted the value of, uh, our neighborhood as well as the county, but this definitely is the right move. The reasons we support this, I just want to, um, you know, say is that, number one, it will add value. Um, this will be the first tech data center in Rockdale County that I know of, um, and it will attract future mindset businesses. So this is something that's definitely needed and is very innovative. So I'll just simply close by saying we support one hundred percent. Um, we are looking forward to the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and this is the new that Rockdale County needs. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Williams, for coming out. I do want to point out the well-behaved manner of your son. He is, yes, yes. What is his name? Hakeem. Let's give Hakeem a round of applause, he's been a trooper tonight. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Mr. Deputy Director, what do we have next?
That is everything for this, uh, public hearing. We have no comments.
Okay, all right, well, that will, I think that's going to close out our point of business for this matter, we'll move right on to the next matter. Thank you all for your time and your patience tonight. Okay.
Uh, next item for you, sir, is a CIC, a change in condition case twenty-three dash zero two. The applicant is Mr. Tyler Lester from Alliance Engineering and Planning. Uh, the applicant is seeking to amend, uh, the condition two C from the established rezoning case from twenty-one dash oh three. The applicant is requesting to reduce, uh, the required internal landscape shift from five feet to two feet.
Staff has recommended approval of this application. The applicant is here. Essentially, again, this, this requirement has provided some issues as far as the development of the site, as far as utilities, sidewalk. Even our Department of Transportation is in agreement that the reduction from this landscape strip to two feet would be very necessary for a smooth completion of this development project.
Okay. Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tyler Lester, I work with Alliance Engineering and Planning at two-nine-nine South Main Street in Alpharetta, Georgia. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client and the applicant, applicant of Rockland Homes, who's requesting the condition change from previously approved zoning. This zoning was approved back in twenty-twenty-one for a one-hundred-and-five-unit townhouse development at the corner of Old Salem and Salem Gateway, which has already been through the engineering process and is currently under construction. I believe right now it's mostly preliminary work, stormwater and sewer infrastructure. One of the conditions, as staff had mentioned, condition two C requires that five-foot landscape strip between the curb and the sidewalk. That's actually relatively unique, I've found in my experience, they're typically two feet in a normal residential development. So it is wider than usual as the condition requires. What we're looking at here, as it was shown on the zoning plan, was the street, the curb, and then there's five feet of landscape strip, and then five feet of sidewalk, and then eighteen-ish feet to the townhouse. So eighteen feet of actual parking area in the driveway. But now they've, you know, they've looked at this, they've worked with the O T, and they're concerned that there isn't enough space between the townhouse and the sidewalk. There's just not enough area for parking. Because we're also showing that five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the street, and we're concerned that people are going to end up having to walk in the street to avoid people's large F-one-fifties, whatever people are driving these days. I know it's the worst feeling in the world when you bump your shin on a trailer, we don't want that. We want our community to be as walkable as possible as, as anybody would want it to be. So reducing that landscape strip on effect, the actual width of the street, it'll still be twenty-four feet wide from front of curb to front of curb. They'll just move the sidewalk three feet further from the townhomes, or three feet closer to the road. Essentially just making that driveway space three feet longer, so from eighteen feet minimum to about twenty-one feet. Just overall, we want people to be safe, we want them to be able to park their cars, we want them to be able to enjoy their neighborhood. With that being said, we agree with the way that the new condition is written, and we agree with all the other commissions. But I'll stop there, happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Washington?
Not right now, I need to think about some, I might be calling.
Commissioner Williams? Okay.
I did want to clarify something as well, again, most driveways are between eighteen to twenty feet. Normally, beauty strips are usually two feet. However, in this condition, they label it as a landscape strip. That's usually not something that we often see, especially with townhomes. Again, it's that two-foot beauty strip, then the five-foot landscape strip, and then additional driveway link again. So this is kind of pushing or sandwiching everything in a very unique manner, which makes it very difficult to develop everything out and to make sure everything is done correctly.
Well, thank you Deputy Director for that clarification. Alright, okay.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? Like, I don't, I'm, I must be tired because I, I don't, I'm not understanding. You're saying that normally it, the, it's only two feet?
Yes, ma'am, but in the conditions...
This condition, we've made it five feet?
Yes, ma'am, when it came to you, when it came to the, to the commissioners in twenty-twenty-one, they had a provision that said a five-foot landscape strip. Normally, it's a two-foot beauty strip or a landscape strip. So the additional three feet has pushed things further closer towards the house. So it makes installing utilities, sidewalk, kind of a, kind of a square peg in a round hole. So what we're trying to do is give the applicant more freedom to actually install everything correctly. So again, you won't have your sidewalks, you won't have your driveways blocking, blocking certain things.
It's, it has to be a reason why we did five feet instead of two. Was it, were we accommodating? Is there anything on the record, could you find out for me if we were accommodating?
No, ma'am, that's the thing, we didn't find anything on the record that shows why we included this. Where everywhere else that we've gone through and looked through other developments throughout the county is a two-foot strip. We've worked with Argott to make sure, because they want to draw it to our attention firsthand. Again, it's a two-foot beauty strip, it's the common practice throughout the county as well as other areas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Director.
So I just have a question for Deputy Director Wheeler. Why is there no planning commission recommendation on this?
So this is a change in condition case. Our board just says that only the planning, only the board of commissioners can hear of a change in condition case and only change it, so that's why it's only before you to, this evening. And you probably realized the last time a change in condition case had a planning commission recommendation, that was because we didn't realize at the time that only the board of commissioners can hear and make those changes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Staff did check when we were just, don't check before we did this.
Be clear. Alright, okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, alright. Alright, Deputy Director, what you have next?
The last case here is another change in condition case twenty-three dash oh three. The site is twenty-nine, twenty-two ninety-four Irish Drive. The applicant is Rockdale County staff. We are asking to amend the zoning condition, condition sixteen from the twenty-two dash ten zoning case. The applicant, in that previous zoning case, there was a condition saying that the admitting area should include Havana and pool area. However, during that, during that commission, the meeting, and also with the applicant, they both agreed upon not including a pool. However, that wasn't struck from the record, so now we're coming back to actually taking out of the conditions as indicated in your packet, that a pool Havana was not what the commissioners had agreed upon as well as the staff, the applicant has agreed upon.
Very good. Commissioners, are your minds clear regarding what the Deputy Director has given us in terms of this change of condition on this particular one?
Clear.
Okay, alright, alright. Well, Deputy Director, anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Well, one of the things I do want to make mention with both of these changes and the work that the planning and development staff is doing, I do appreciate the transparency and the level of housekeeping issues to make some of the errors that have been made in the past, even prior to this leadership team, making those things right. So I do appreciate that and you bringing them forth in a timely fashion. We've been noticing that several of our regular meetings are loaded with items coming out of the planning and development department, which is needed in order for us to catch up as this year is hastening to a close.
Do you remember the day when sometimes we didn't have a planning conference?
Absolutely.
Public hearing because there was nothing?
There was nothing to do. Alright, there's a lot of, a lot of economic development in Rockdale County, absolutely. Okay, are we omitting any other items for tonight's business?
No, sir.
Commissioner Washington, any closing comments from you?
None.
Commissioner Williams? Thank you to our planning and development staff, thank you to all of those staff from public relations and all of our citizens who have hung in there with us tonight. We appreciate your patience, this meeting is adjourned.